Welcome to meeting to order. State of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in this world of liberty and justice for all. All right, we had some written communication I shared with you during the week when I received a letter for support for the Erie County Board of Bosses Board. So next week we'll have to, or next meeting, we'll have to decide who we're going to nominate for that board. Those two seats, there's three people so far running. Reports of boards and committees, will you have a report?
Yes, the Smallwood Drive reopening meeting that began last week, and we just reviewed how the staff and students are thinking about building, and we'll receive those comments from state, and we'll meet again in the future, we'll cover these yet, but I will report back to you in the evening again.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any meetings?
Great, I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Bellisle here to provide an update to our district safety plan as it relates to communicable disease continuity of operations plan. So this is a new requirement that came at us about a month ago. Mr. Bellisle has been spearheading the initiative for us, and he'll go over with you the process and the timeline and the updates to our plan.
So it's quite the mouthful. It sounds very, very intriguing just by the title, right? So I share with you each year, right around the fall time, our updates to our safety plan, some of those requirements, and immediately this emergency response team from the buildings who some of you are a part of. This came out, as Mr. Pennella just shared, recently back in December, a required update. And as you see the title, you can see the purpose of it is to plan for future incidences, hopefully not of what we're experiencing this year relative to planning, I call it pandemic planning, to put it sort of shorter, alliterative, in terms, for you, Dr. Shanahan. So this stems from Section 2801A of New York State law, which governs the requirement for safety plans in buildings within schools. What essentially they've done is add another addendum. So when you look at our safety plan, there are a good 15 to 17 addendums that govern anything from how you respond to a tornado, to an active shooter, to a flood, to a chemical spill, you name it, it goes on and on. So essentially, this is another addendum that's going to be added in the future, but this year it's a whole new plan as a component to our safety plan. And I'll run through some of what is required to be in there momentarily. So a little bit of background, as Mr. Pennella pointed out, back in September, Governor Cohen was signed into law Chapter 160 of the law we just referenced, which requires public employers, including schools, of course, to adopt what we just called the continuation of operations plan or continuity of operations plan. Essentially, it requires district safety plans and protocols in responding to a public health emergency, and this is consistent with 27C of Labor Law, which essentially says the exact same thing, and I have it there in parentheses, it's just essentially that the public employers are required to develop operation plans in the event of declared public health emergency, which is what we're in the midst of right now. So just a little bit of the timeline, it was a quick timeline. So the guidance was released on December 3rd. We actually met with our safety committee, with which Ms. McLaughlin is a part of. We met shortly thereafter on purpose to review this as a primary motivation for that meeting, in part to review what the requirements, but also to get feedback and any changes or any items that we may want to pay attention more closely to. So as you may know, we have teachers, administrators, emergency personnel, fire, police, emergency management services here around the corner, Health Row Community Center, as well as Director of Risk Management from Erie County Board of Bosses, who provides a lot of resources in situations like this for templates and ways in which we may want to consider updating our plans. So after we reviewed that, what I did between December 16th and January 13th is draft a plan based on feedback that was provided from the group, as well as a draft plan that was provided, our template from the state. We then, I then reviewed that with our administrative team, which at the time included Dr. Shanahan, Laura Wazinski, myself, Jeff Wheaton, and Mark Rampados, Director of Facilities, through from all of their standpoints, what fine-tuned adjustments might we need to make before we then provide that out to the community for review. So the guidance then requires us to share that with the unions, it's what the recent guidance asked us to do, was to share this union for feedback, which we did. It was required to be shared by January, I'm sorry, February 4th. We ultimately shared that with all of the unions on January 27th to receive any feedback. To this date, we've not received any feedback other than "It looks great." So that's where things stand at this point in time, and as you see in the timeline that brings us to today for the board presentation and to the public. We are required to have a 30-day comment period again, as we do with our full safety plan. So that went out on February 8th, and will close on March 8th. And then this will come to you for adoption at the board meeting on March 16th, which is prior to the required date on April 1st. A little bit about Section 27C. So essentially, what you find in this plan, well, there's a number of things, and I just highlighted some of the more important items here. The first is, first of which is identifying which staff and which employees in general, staff or faculty are essential. Now, it's important to note here, though, that the Department of Health outlines none of our positions as essential, and what they mean by that is being essential to be on-site as opposed to working from home. So essentially, we're essential, but we're not essential to be visited here if we don't need to. So what they ask us to do is essentially look at the shapes of gray. Who's most essential to be on-site if we were, just as we're doing now with the blue, yellow, the blue, green, yellow, orange, and red zones that we've all had over time? Essentially, what, who's essential to be here when things are at a point where it's, we'll call it stage one, two, three, four, and five, which is what the guidance talks about? So if things aren't that bad, who needs, who can be here? If things are to a point where there's a crisis, called a crisis, who still needs to be here if anyone? So that plan outlines that. And then it goes on to talk about who and when and how we telework or telecommute. It also is required to talk about how we may stagger shifts. It also talks about how we'll procure and utilize PPE, personal protective equipment, which we've all become very familiar with this year. How we'll respond if there's known case symptoms or if someone tests positive, and then we have to outline our hours and work locations within the plan. These are all, as you well know, within our reopening plan now. So we took some of that and carried that over, while we also added some things that weren't in the plan that they're now asking for, such as a sort of aligning scaffolding those essential positions from one, two, three, up to a five. Some just additional guidance here that I'll share briefly. I've already noted before that we have to share this with our union representatives, which of course we did, and that was, again, required by February 4th and accomplished on January 27th. We also must consider any responses, which we have not received any other than a thumbs up from all unions. So we have not had to provide any written response within that reasonable timeframe we require, because we haven't gotten any requests. And then ultimately, a copy of the final version will again be on our website, and I'll share that with you in a moment in the next slide. Actually, I think it was prior to. Share this with you real quick. So if anyone you run to has a question, on our website, where we currently have our district safety plan, you'll see right below it, the continuity of operations plan there for public review, which Mr. Pennella put up that on February 8th. That is not, that's not for me. So where we are now, again, next steps, on March 8th, the public comment period will close, and on March 16th, you'll see it on your agenda for formal adoption as part of the safety plan. Again, this is a separate plan in and of itself in paper and in terms of reading, but as you'll see in the upcoming year, it will ultimately then become part of the full safety plan. And that's it. Any questions?
I think it was nice throughout last spring and up to present date, you know, we've been living this and building it as we go, so we had a nice template to work off of, and we're able to use a lot of what we put together for staffing, you know, telework, you know, how we manage testing, working from home.
Facilities.
Yeah, facilities. All of that stuff that we've been documenting along the way and planning for came together nicely here. So thank you, Mike, for how you pulled it together here, but I think what made it more manageable was the fact that you've been doing a great job writing those plans all along as things have come up that we've had to face. You know, we weren't told back in March of 2020 that you had to have a staffing plan for how you were going to handle, you know, the potential for kids to not be allowed on-site, but we put one together. And so it really came in handy, you know, that among many things that we've done. So great work both ongoing and then pulling this together.
I am glad we got such a great team of that online team, because to be quite frank, the template that we shared was woefully inadequate, and what we have is not. So in order to adopt that and work with our committee was so much more, well, powerful, well-organized, and easily understood than draft, so I really felt a lot in terms of creating. So, thank you.
So I wanted to offer tonight a little bit of an update on in-person instruction. For those of you that read every word of all the emails I sent, it'll sound very familiar to what was sent last Friday in my letter to the community about in-person instruction. We sort of used that letter as a template to put this presentation together. So I know you all read that very closely, so some of this may be redundant, and for that, I apologize. You know, as you're seeing in the media, social media, all forms of media, you know, there's an increased demand for full-time in-person instruction. You know, there's many advocacy groups out there statewide, even across the country, that are, you know, looking for their kids to be in school in a greater capacity. In many cases, there are places where kids have not been in school at all since last March. You know, we're fortunate to have a hybrid model, which has had our kids in school since last, or since September. But there are places across the country, and I would estimate it's probably close to 50% of kids hasn't been physically in a school building at all since last March. So that's where you see a majority of the advocacy coming on a national level in places like, you know, California and Chicago and New York City, or even big urban centers locally here, even in Buffalo. But regardless, wherever you are in that level of attendance with your children, people want more until it's five days a week and it's full-time. So we recognize that certainly, and we feel that as well. You know, my advocacy, I think, is, has been there. I've been very clear that I think the best place for kids to be is in school. I signed off on a letter that was written by our Erie Niagara School Superintendent's Association advocating for our Commissioner of Education and our Department of Education to update the guidance that was issued last July that we're currently following. And I'm sure you've heard the most controversial piece of that guidance is the six feet of physical distancing, which is the fact, you know, the main reason why many school districts are in a hybrid model. So one of the things we've had to do throughout the pandemic is kind of read the tea leaves, look into a crystal ball, you know, look down the road, look around corners, and often we're getting information through press conferences, press releases, and that type of thing. And what we've tried to do as a school district is, you know, read between the lines and get the messages that are being put out there and be proactive so that we're prepared and planned and ahead of the curve. So on February 19th, over the Friday of our February break, the governor made some interesting comments in his press conference that really took me by surprise, and they're up here on the screen. You know, he said, "Local governments should be aggressive on in-class teaching unless there's a community or school that has an infection spike, you know, that is different." But if the school doesn't have an infection spike, and if the school is safer than the surrounding community, then why isn't the school open five days a week? So I'm a pretty adamant Bills fan, and oftentimes, my family complains that I say things to the television while watching the games, because they're like, "Man, they can't hear you. Why are you yelling at the TV?" I yelled more at this press conference than I did at the Bills playoff game when they lost to the Kansas City Chiefs, because part of the reason why we're not always in school five days a week are because of him and because of the guidelines we're required to follow. And then he put out, he mentioned, you know, "Teachers have concerns, they're legitimate, get the teachers vaccinations, vaccinate teachers and reopen the schools." Great idea. I hope some of our local leaders listen to that advice, and they try to prioritize educators for vaccines. I think that's a wonderful opportunity for us to help advance the reopening of our schools. Then on Monday, 22nd, the governor announced an executive order that was later rescinded, but he had asked on Monday, or announced on Monday, that we were going to have to gather information on the number of teachers in our school district that are vaccinated. On Tuesday, we received information that we would have to report that starting on Wednesday, the 24th, and then on Wednesday, the 24th, we were told we don't have to report that. But we did start gathering some of that information to be prepared for that Wednesday reporting. But the reason I bring this up is it was a sign to me that things are moving in the direction of opening in greater capacity. Those two press conferences back-to-back signaled that, you know, this is coming this spring, which is good news for most of us, and was really accelerated, I think, our planning process relative to in-person instruction. The last sort of thing that was not very subtle at all, when Howard Zucker was before, well, that's a new twist. Dr. Howard Zucker was before the assembly last week. They were really asking him questions, health-related questions, but one of the assembly members in the state had asked him about the guidance that's driving schools into a hybrid model, and his response was, you know, "We're working on that guidance." And this was on last week's Thursday, and his response was, "We hope to have an update to that guidance maybe as early as next week," which is this week. So again, you know, you're kind of watching these things unfold, and you're, we're leaning towards maybe updated guidance that will allow us to open in a greater capacity. So the reason why we're not open five days a week, full-time in person, is because we're following the guidance that I've already mentioned from the State Department of Health, the State Education Department, and Erie County Health Department plays a role. While they don't write the guidance, they sort of enforce the contact tracing, in particular, and quarantine guidelines that we have to follow and that we've worked with them on. And, you know, there are people that have asked, you know, there's language in the guidance that may allow you to be less than six feet currently, but you can use barriers, which is true. In the New York City guidance, there's information that says social distancing is defined as six feet slash a barrier and a mask. But back in July, you know, that guidance first came out July 16th, and then it was, it was actually six feet or a mask on July 16th, and then on July 22nd, it became six feet slash a barrier or a mask, and then there was still some interpretation of what that means. So at that time, you know, being under the timeline we were with, you know, Labor Day being just around the corner, a month away, you know, most of us went with six feet, and some of us, like we did here locally, went with six feet and barriers, because part of what we were doing in our reopening efforts was trying to instill confidence in our families as well as our staff that we were doing everything we could to implement all the mitigating factors possible for safety, for health and safety. So I then reached out over the February break to our liaison from the Erie County Department of Health, kind of seeing all these things, and I had mentioned to her, you know, "If I'm raising the guidance correctly, we don't have to wait for updated guidance from the state. If we have barriers, we can maybe open some of our grade levels in a greater capacity under six feet." Unfortunately, her response was one that made me a little hesitant to do that in advance of updated guidance statewide. Her response was, you know, "While the state says six feet or barriers, we would quarantine an entire class if six feet was compromised, even with the use of barriers and masks and HEPV-13 filtration, and in some cases HEPA filters. That's because there's good science on distancing and masking and very little on barriers." She said also, "Compromising the six feet puts more bodies in the room for a prolonged period of time, more micro droplets in the air, reduces airflow, the risk for the whole room goes up, thus why we would use a sweeping quarantine." In my opinion, at that point, when I saw that, I thought, you know, we've had some cases, and I was really targeting our elementary schools. We've had some cases at our elementary schools. The last time I looked at it was eight at Smallwood, maybe 11 amongst the students that went in here, and I thought, if there's going to be a sweeping quarantine of an entire class of kids because there's one positive case in the room, that to me would be much more disruptive to the educational environment of the kids than just remaining in our hybrid model until we have statewide updated guidance. Because again, the other thing that was happening is the CDC was putting out updated guidelines now that we have a new administration in the White House, which also happened around February 12th. So my thought was that, you know, we looked at the CDC guidance, and it doesn't match with what Erie County's practices would be, so I felt at that time, we probably need to wait and see the New York State updated guidance, because that will kind of force Erie County to reevaluate their contact tracing and quarantining guidelines. The thought of 18 to 20, you know, first graders all going into quarantine for two weeks and then having to flip to fully remote seemed much more disruptive and kind of a gamble, you know, because at that point when I saw this, I thought, you're really taking a gamble to say, okay, will we have a case or not? And then if we do, with the February break and people traveling and such, it just didn't feel right. So at this point, we're actively planning for updated guidance from the New York State Department of Health. We anticipate that it will be forthcoming, but again, there's still some things out there that are open for interpretation. For example, late last night in California, you know, the governor reached an agreement with the teachers' union in California, where he took the federal stimulus dollars that were given to California and said, "Schools can have $2 billion of this money if they get kids in school by the end of April, and they need to submit detailed plans of how they're going to do that." He also allocated 10% of his vaccines in the state to educators in an attempt to open schools. Ironically, today, President Biden announced that he wants all states to have all educators or school employees vaccinated by the end of April. So now, when I see some of these messages, I'm thinking, okay, maybe the timeline's not as aggressive as it used to be, so I don't want to get too far ahead of what may be coming down the road with New York State guidance, because now there may be a coordinated effort to vaccinate teachers on the horizon, especially when the president says he'd like it done by the end of April. I hope that gets our local leaders moving in that direction. I would think it would. So at this point, our, as Mrs. McLaughlin had mentioned, our elementary committees, both schools, met last week. Tomorrow, our middle and high school committees are reading. What I'd really like the public, or all of you, to know is that we're working towards the goal of having our kids attend, but it's not as simple as, okay, the guidance has changed now, come Monday, open the schools. You know, we have trailers at every school that have furniture in it, you know, we moved all of our cafeteria furniture out, half of our desks and tables out of the buildings, which all need to come back in order for us to do that. We have to, you know, adjust schedules in schools, we have to look at busing and transportation and routing to try to ensure that we're being as safe as possible on buses. So it's not as simple as, hey, the guidance has changed, you don't have to be six feet apart to open the schools on Monday. You know, it may take a month or so in order for us to be able to get all those plans together, and my priority would be kind of from the bottom up. You know, I would push to get the elementary students in as soon as possible, because we don't have as much furniture in storage in those classrooms, and our class sizes are smaller, and then we would go, you know, to our middle school and then up to our high school. The other thing that we are talking about is the model we've implemented in our middle and high school, which many of you are familiar with, the concurrent synchronous model, is not being implemented across Western New York. If you had the opportunity to talk to people in other high schools, many of them have kids that are getting instruction in person the two or three days a week they attend, but when they're not in school, they're working independently. And our model allows for our kids to get four full days of direct instruction from our teachers, because they are teaching the kids who are in person and at home simultaneously, the concurrent synchronous model. However, it's pretty taxing on our teachers, and one of the things we've heard from them loud and clear is that the Wednesday, asynchronous Wednesdays that they have is really an important time for them to be able to build that digital content that they're pushing out in the remote instruction. So our planning has to consider that, because we have to consider whether or not our staff has the ability to go to five days a week, because currently, we have about 300 kids at our high school that are fully remote, and we expect that some of them would want to continue that option through the end of the school year, which means our staff wouldn't be continuing that synchronous model, which means we have to consider very strongly whether or not we can do five days a week or four days a week. And those conversations have started and are ongoing. The other thing is I'm going to be working closely with the ADA president, Mr. Davis, to start advocating to some of the area hospitals and pharmacies to try to get our vaccination efforts met, and hopefully with the new presidential directive that came out today, we'll have a little bit more success there. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, you know, this guidance may come out, maybe it comes out at the end of the week, maybe they follow past patterns, and it comes out at 8:00 PM on Friday. You know, but if it comes out, it's not as simple as us just saying, okay, we don't have to be six feet apart, let's just open the schools. So I think we would be prepared to do that sooner at the elementaries, and we would prioritize that. And there's some scientific basis behind starting at the elementaries also. Not a doctor, but I listen to them on TV all the time, and they do say that there's less cases at the elementary schools, because typically, elementary students carry less of a viral load if they're infected or asymptomatic in their nasal hairs. So that would be something that we would also want to consider too, is that teenagers, middle school and high schoolers have a tendency to be spreaders of virus more like adults because of their age and size. So again, that's why we would prioritize our elementaries into middle and high school. So this is just the agenda that was borrowed from the elementary meeting, and talks about how the committees have met and the work that's ongoing. And I'm open for any questions, any of you having.
Did you have some insight as to how the local leaders know about vaccinating teachers?
Well, I think they, many of them feel as though they're offering vaccines to educators, and that many educators have had access to the vaccines. However, my preference would be that there is a coordinated effort and a dedicated effort for educators to have access to vaccines, because many, there's two things. You know, we want to protect the health and safety of our staff, that's a priority. The second thing is, we've had more cases amongst our staff in the schools, and they, in many cases, statistically pose a bigger risk of in many cases, statistically pose a bigger risk of transmission in the buildings. So we also want them vaccinated from that perspective as well. And until, you know, I kind of feel like, if they're just having to get the vaccine on their own, and, you know, track down links and, you know, make phone calls and maybe get an appointment, maybe not, it makes it difficult to say, as of April 19th, everybody has had the opportunity to be vaccinated, so it's safe to open. So I'm hoping the president may have moved us in that direction.
In the six hours that you thought you had to report the vaccination numbers to the state, did you gather any of that information?
Yes. So I would say conservatively, we're in the 40% to 50% range, which was, which was nice. We've made information available to our staff when it becomes available, but I'm sure you've seen the news reports, it's like the hunger beans trying to get an appointment for these vaccines. You know, all of a sudden, someone will share a link on social media, like, oh, there's this pod over in Bowensville, and, you know, the people are sharing it with their friends, and then, oh, they're all booked up. But, you know, the, I'm sure you saw Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was approved earlier this week, and they already started shipping them out, you know, Monday, and more and more, I think, we're moving in the right direction. So sometimes I know you're out, when you're out and about, you get the questions, or I had heard that one of you, I think it might have been you, attended a PTA meeting, and Mrs. Flannan shared with me that you did a wonderful job when the topic came up, addressing concerns from a district perspective and from the board. So I appreciate that, and it was nice to get that feedback, you know, and I'm glad that we are all on the same page and, you know, we have the same understanding. Okay. That's all I have. Definitely more to come on that situation.
Great, thank you. With that, we will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items, E1, A through G, E2, B through D, and E3, D, G.
State of the year. 28. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, and all those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through G, 2, A through E, and 3, D and G, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. I don't believe we have any follow-up actions on Mrs. Mr. Stow. With that, we need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of 12 persons.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries 7-0. Patrick, thank you again for coming.